Want to call to order the council meeting of November 9th, 2015. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardak?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Bill Doring?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Natalie Wolff?
Yes.
Scott Larmer?
Yes.
Chief Wallace?
Yes.
If everyone could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is the minutes from our regularly scheduled council meeting of October. The minutes were circulated to all council members in their packs. Are there any corrections or additions or deletions to those minutes? If not, we can consider the minutes approved. The next item on the agenda is the finance report for September 2015.
The UAN report has been included in your council packet, but I wanted to summarize a few of the more important elements of the finances for the month of September 2015. The earnings tax collections for the month totaled $120,000, and this is down about 2.8% compared to September of 2014's collection of $123,000. Our year-to-date collection of earnings is a little over $2 million. Our estimate for the year is 2.8 million, so we have collected 75% of our earnings tax as of the end of September. In regards to the property tax, we did receive, property tax was referred to as rollback. We received that through the state of Ohio, and that was received during the month of September in the amount of a little over $74,000. The local government fund, which is one of the few sources of dollars we received from the state, totaled a little over $4,900 during the month. The general fund summary for revenues for the month, revenues totaled $234,000. I mentioned the earnings tax was a significant portion of that. Overall, the earnings tax collection of $2 million is part of the total amount that we've collected of $3.7 million for the general fund. So of that $3.7 million, we had budgeted or estimated about $4.4 million, so the village has collected about 84% of its estimated revenue for the year. The expenses for the month of September totaled a little over $254,000, and that puts our total expenditures at the end of September at $3.1 million. We had budgeted $4.3 million for the year, so the village has spent about 73% of the budget as of the end of September. And that leaves us with a end-of-the-year, end-of-September balance, unencumbered balance of $4.3 million. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the manager?
I don't have a question. I just, every time you give your report, Scott, and I look back at, I look at the local government fund revenue chart, and I see where we are now at less than $5,000 and where we were. Extremely frustrating. And I just wanted to point it out that I look at it every month, and my heart sinks.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? The next item on the agenda was a guest speaker, and she is not here yet. Maybe she will come later. But we'll move on to the next item, which is a recognition of a retirement here in the village. And the first thing I, before I go down, I just have to comment that, Tom, you are obviously a very well-respected member and a long-term member of the Amberly service. I mean, the fact that this many of your fellow employees are here this evening, I think, is a real tribute to you and your service here for the village. But if the village manager could join me down at the podium, and Tom also, we have a couple letters to read and a presentation. First, I want to read a letter that Mary Stillpass wanted to be here this evening to read this. She prepared this letter, but I'm going to read the letter from Mary and then present this to you. "Tom, as you prepare to retire later this month, after so many years of providing services to the citizens of Amberly Village, I want to thank you for your service to our community on behalf of the Environmental Stewardship Committee. Since its creation in 2004, you have served as the village staff representative of the Amberly Village Beautification Committee, which grew into the Environmental Stewardship Committee. You have been instrumental in helping to realize numerous projects that will add value and beauty to our community today and will continue to do so in the future. Key projects in which you played a vital role include the selection and planning of the annual Arbor Day Tree, the Ridge Road Streetscape tree planting, the installation of the island garden between the entrance driveways, the corner garden projects at our gateway intersections along Ridge Road, at Ronald Reagan Highway, Galberth Road, and Section Road, installation of the village rain garden, and village tree inventory, to name only a few. We are all grateful for the exemplary efforts you have given to these tasks. As a former council member and former mayor, I have had the privilege of working with you in your various village capacities to work toward achieving a safe, attractive, and livable community. We will miss your expert tree academy training and the green thumb you brought to every project. All of the best to you as you embark on your next chapter." This is from Mary.[462.56][462.56](APPLAUSE).
Well, Tom, tonight, the village celebrates the long-storied career that you have, that you've brought to us. Tom was born in Cincinnati, and Tom spent six years with the Lachlan Maintenance Department, including three, as a firefighter, and I believe it was a volunteer firefighter at the time. So that's before he joined the village in 1990. Currently, Tom is the most senior man in the maintenance department, and he's also one of the most senior employees across all departments. I believe that Tom received his firefighter certification in 1995, so shortly after coming here from Lachlan, and then his title changed to maintenance worker/firefighter, as all of our maintenance workers are at this time. Tom also spent several years as the village employee liaison to the Environmental Stewardship Committee, which Mayor Muthing just read the letter from Mary Stillpass. And Tom also acquired his Tree City USA bachelor certificate in the Tree Commission Academy, as mentioned. And Tom has been very dedicated to those efforts, and anytime anybody has a question about the landscaping around the building, they go to Tom. So it's very appreciative of the services that he's been able to provide to us. Well, Tom has been a longtime Lachlan resident, and his family includes his wife Ellen, his sons Brandon and Brian, and his granddaughter Natalie. And Tom will tell you stories over the past four years about what he calls Natty, so that's his granddaughter, so we know that she has him wrapped around her finger, so she's very special in his eyes. And while we're happy for Tom to start a well-earned and deserved retirement, we're certainly sad to see him go. Tom takes with him 25 years of village history and work experience alike. And many residents know Tom by name, and they are very confident that work was handled well when his crew passed by their homes. So it's a testament to you, Tom. So we just want to thank Tom tonight for his service, his dedication to the village of Amberly, and as a token of our appreciation, the mayor and council have a presentation they'd like to make to Tom.
I mean, this is a plaque commemorating your service. I mean, a plaque is one thing, but your service speaks so much of what it's all about. You were an instrumental employee to the village, and you will be missed, so thank you very much.[622.29][622.29](APPLAUSE).
Okay, the next item on the agenda is committee reports, and we will start with the finance committee. And again, thanks to all the employees of Amberly Village, and Tom, this was great, and thanks for everyone to come out and recognize Tom on this very important day.[694.75][694.75](LAUGHING). Okay, finance report.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I'd like to present the third reading of ordinance number 2015-12, which is to add Chapter 101 and amend section number 9304 of the Municipal Code of Ordinances Regarding Municipal Income Tax. This being the third reading, I so move that we adopt this ordinance.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2015-12, which is the third reading this evening. Are there any questions or comments on this ordinance? If not, it has been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 2015-12. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardak?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Bill Doring?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Natalie Wolff?
Yes.
We will move on to the Streets, Public Utilities, and Sewers Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Streets Committee met to discuss the televising of the sewers here in Amberly, the stormwater sewers here in Amberly, and we have it before tonight, Resolution 2015-25. As we mainly remember from 2014, we started a program to televise the stormwater pipes and conduits and so forth throughout the village, and it was designed to be a four-year project with a fourth of the lines being scoped this year and so, and last year and next two years. By scoping the lines with the camera, the village has the ability to prioritize with more information which would be the priorities for repair of the lines. Additionally, it often comes, it discovers a problem that can be fixed long before it gets to be to a stage where we have to completely dig up the street or the yard and have to replace the entire line. So while it is, you know, the amount that we're going to approve tonight is $30,000 for approximately 25,000 feet of stormwater, it pays for itself to a certain extent because we are able to save money in the long run by not having to dig up all these pipes. It's a lot cheaper to re-line the pipe rather than having to dig it up. So we feel this has been a very beneficial program for the village. Let's see, I think we've gotten two quotes that both were a dollar per foot, and they both have the ability to do some minor cleaning and so forth while they're in there with the cameras, so there could be, the price may go up to the $30,000. So I'm looking to pass this resolution tonight. Thank you.
So that's a motion to approve?
Motion to approve this resolution.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2015-25, which would authorize the village manager to enter into a contract to perform the televising work on the stormwater pipes. Are there any questions or comments?
Oh, I can add that the scoping issue will be along Ridge, Galberth, Apple Ridge, Roman Estates, and Roman Reserve subdivision, and maybe a few extra areas depending on the actual square footage of those areas.
Okay, any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2015-25. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted, it passes unanimously. Does that complete?
That completes the Streets.
Okay, we will move on to the Health, Education, and Welfare Committee.
Thanks. In November of 2012, the Health, Education, and Welfare Committee passed the deer management resolution, and as part of that resolution, the committee is required to meet once a year and evaluate how the deer management is coming along. So we met, and the committee determined that we would continue collecting data as indicated by the program. One of the things that we are required to do is do a deer count every three years, and we began that in 2013, so the next one will be in 2016, and that is the, with the infrared, I don't remember the official name. And so that, we didn't take any further action other than to agree to continue with the program. That concludes my report.
Questions or comments? Okay, we will now move on to the Public Outreach Committee.
The Public Outreach Committee met this month to follow up on the survey that was sent to residents regarding the 75th anniversary celebration and to gauge public opinion on that event, and the results of the survey were minimal, so we discussed, we discussed the results of the survey and determined that they really weren't a true indicator because of the event, because people seemed to be having a good time, they just didn't fill out the survey. And the other thing we discussed was follow-up from last month's council meeting regarding the print newsletter and whether we should mail it four times a year, and with advice from Scott, village manager, we have, we're going to continue our efforts to focus on technology, our technology to reach our residents and promote the app and social media. And that concludes my report.
Oh, we will continue the, two times a year.
Two times a year, right, we're continuing that.
Any questions or comments? If not, we will move on to the Police and Fire Committee.
Thank you. The committee met this afternoon as part of the budget process of the village. We met to hear from the chief about the needs budget requests that he'll, he's considering for the police and fire functions. This is sort of a preliminary stage. It is still working its way through the internal channels before the full budget comes to the Finance Committee, but it was an opportunity for us to kind of be educated on the priorities that they're looking at for the year while it's still under process, so that when we get to the, to the actual budget review, there's, there's a little more context for what's being discussed. So that concludes my report.
Any questions or comments? If not, we will move on to the Land Development Committee, and as chair of the Land Development Committee, the committee met five times in the past month. Four of those meetings were to follow up with individuals who had submitted a letter that Amberly Village sent out an expression or requested parties to express interest in developing Amberly Green. Those letters were sent out at the end of July, requesting letters by the end of August. We received submissions from four groups. We met with each of the four groups during October to help determine, determine the way forward. The committee will meet again probably later this week, if not early next week, to then discuss the way forward with respect to those four letters. Again, the, all of the development will be consistent with the long-range plan for the property, and part of the process will involve discussions with residents as we move forward. So this is a very preliminary stage and is not something that is anywhere close to final. The other meeting had to deal with the north site, and as we, earlier this year, we approved a contract to sell the north site to one particular party who is still working on their due diligence process, but as part of that, and this was something we were aware of, there are three small parcels within the north site, I mean, very small parcels, they total a half acre, but they are owned by Hamilton County, and in order to clear the title on the property and be able to move forward with the sale, we have to clear that ownership of the property, those properties. And the village manager has been working very diligently with Hamilton County to clear those three parcels, and has, Hamilton County has finally responded to the village manager and is willing to sell those three pieces of property to the village for the book value that are on, for the tax value on the property, which total around $18,000, which would allow us to then move forward with the proposed sale of the property. So I hereby move that we approve ordinance 2015-14. Well, first, I would like to waive the three readings on this particular ordinance because we would like to move forward in an expeditious manner on the sale of the property. So I would first like to move that we waive the three readings on this ordinance.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings on this ordinance this evening, so please call the roll.
Rich Bardak?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Bill Doring?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Natalie Wolff?
Yes.
Okay, since it has now been approved that we can waive the three readings, I now move that we approve ordinance 2015-14, which would authorize and direct the village manager to execute a contract for the purchase of the real property from Hamilton County for the price of approximately $18,000, it's $18,720 to be precise.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2015-14. Are there any questions or comments? If not, please call the roll.
Rich Bardak?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Bill Doring?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Natalie Wolff?
Yes.
And finally, I would like to declare that this is an emergency measure, which allows the measure to go into effect immediately. Ordinarily, with an ordinance, it requires a 45-day period to just become effective. What this allows is that the measure becomes effective immediately, which would allow us, again, to move forward in an expeditious manner. So this ordinance is, I hereby declare that this is an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety, and it shall go into effect forthwith.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we declare that this ordinance is an emergency. Are there any questions or comments on that? If not, please call the roll.
Rich Bardak?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Bill Doring?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Natalie Wolff?
Yes.
Okay, that completes my report from the Land Development Committee. We will now move on to the Compensation and Benefits Committee.
Mr. Warren is not here this evening, so I'm giving this report. The committee met last week to consider the, our annual discussion about offering a holiday card to employees, and we unanimously recommend that we continue the custom this year, offering employees a gift card or cash of $250, and so I move that we, the council, make that, take that action.
Second. Okay, it has moved and, been moved and seconded that we continue the practice that has been adopted over the last few years and continue with the same amount of the holiday gift cards that has been done in recent years. So are there any questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously. We will now move on to the Manager's Report.
I'd like to mention a few items out of the Manager's Report. The most important going on right now is leaf collection for the residents. We began picking up leaves on October the 19th, and we certainly have collected quite a few leaves so far, but we have also suffered some significant equipment breakdowns, so even though we are the ones that set the schedule for leaf collection, we feel like we are behind, so we have been working a little bit of overtime and to try to make up that time. But I guess the most important point out of this is to let residents know that their leaves will be collected, continue to put them at the, at the street, not in the street, and pay attention to the neighborhood signs, or white and black signs that typically give you a couple days' notice that the leaf crew will be by to vacuum the leaves. So just encourage you to look out for those because that is quite helpful to know when the leaf crew is coming by. But we will continue to collect leaves up through the end of December, so we're probably about a third of the way through the season at this point, so there are a lot of leaves yet to fall, even though there are a lot of leaves on the ground. And the second item I wanted to mention is the staff is working with the Hamilton County Planning and Development Department on the Redding Road corridor, and this is a project that Hamilton County has initiated, and even though it does not involve us directly, because our corporation limit is not on Redding Road, we do have two businesses that are located on Sunnybrook Drive that fronts out to Redding Road. Two of those businesses, one being Procter &amp; Gamble and the other one being Pepsi. And certainly, the village is, looks out for those two businesses and tries to take their interest into, into concern as it relates to anything that goes on along Redding Road. So the Hamilton County Planning Department has invited the village to participate in that process, and Hamilton County is actually taking this one step further, and they are having a charrette this Friday that will encourage young planners to come forth and generate ideas about how to transform that particular corridor. And so I think this could be a great benefit to the village, especially our businesses, as that corridor gets some attention and perhaps some ideas are generated out of World Town Planning Day this Friday that might be able to assist in the planning process. So I just wanted the council to know that we are involved with that, with that process. And the third item I wanted to mention is in regards to our police department. They did an exemplary job of handling a missing person report last month, and while the incident didn't occur here in Amberly, our police department did step up and took the report and greatly assisted in locating a missing, missing resident. And I think it's important to point out that this particular resident was located with, within about five hours, and that's after a significant amount of research was being done and, and trying to determine where the individual was. So fortunately, we had some leads and were able to track the individual down. I just wanted you to know that a commendation was given to those police and dispatch employees who were involved in that, in that process. So we're very proud of what our police department does and very proud of our employees and our chief. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the manager?
Scott, on Redding Road? How big, how long, how far, what part, Redding Road runs from downtown all the way to Edmondale. What part of the Redding Road are they actually looking at from the county's perspective? This is going to be from Cross County Highway and going south to Section Road. So it's that corridor that affects us that you've seen the decline in the real estate in that area. I think what's important to also note about that is when you look at the housing behind some of that area, the housing stock is very good, but that particular business district is what has declined, so the focus is really on that section between Cross County and Section. Section.
Excuse me, thank you. I will also note that a number of us who drive on Section into Rosemont appreciate that you've got the tracks, some maintenance work done on the tracks there. You know, it's not quite as bumpy, I mean, it's not a perfect thing, but I'm shocked that we got what we got, given the Genesee and Wyoming Railroad, which owns the Indiana-Ohio, is a multi-state, you know, quite a big operation, and track maintenance on the streets is not the high priority on their list. So thank you for doing that.
Well, I certainly wouldn't want to take credit for that, but do appreciate when council members or residents notice issues like that, bring it to our attention, because that's one more perspective that we can share with the railroad about what repairs need to be made. Thank you.
Scott, are you participating in the charrette, or is members of our staff participating in the charrette?
I will be there for part of the day, and then they are going to adjourn over to Redding Library and do some additional work, but I will be there for the morning session, yes.
Well, I hope you will share with us the report that comes.
Sure.
You may-- you were not here yet, but we did hold World Town Planning Day here in Amberly in 2009, looking at the properties here, and I participated in it, and it was really quite fun, so.
If council members would like to participate, you're more than welcome to attend.
I know, I'm actually not free on Friday, but--
Okay, all right.
The mornings-- the first session is, in fact, in the community room.
What time's it start? Maybe I could come in the morning?
Eight.
Eight? Oh, maybe.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we will move on to the Chief's Report.
I just have one item that I wanted to address, and it was a topic that was on Next Door regarding the traffic on Ridge Road and Galberth. We have been experiencing more traffic in that area, but a lot of the traffic is-- it's dictated by the number of accidents that we've been experiencing on 75 and 71, so it kind of just turns into a thoroughfare. If you go up 71 near Cross County, if there's an accident on Cross County or 71, you'll see the same issue on Montgomery Road through the city of Montgomery. There, you know, we can-- we will tweak the lights, and we'll have the engineers look at the lights again, just to see if there's something we can do to assist the traffic getting through town. But it's one-- once we assist the traffic and we make it flow a little better, everyone realizes, again, it's flowing better and we're going to have more traffic, so it's a constant battle we fight, having a nice thoroughfare, but with-- until the construction's done on 75 and, you know, the lower part of 71, we're going to continue to deal with the same issue.
Are there questions for the Chief? If not, we will move on to the Mayor's Report, and just as I do on all Mayor's Reports, I covered the Environmental Resturity Committee. The committee held its fall program, and I think it was probably the most successful in terms of attendance program that we've had, at least in the last five years. We had over 50 people attend a creek walk in French Park, and it was-- we had experts from Hamilton County, Cincinnati Parks, and the Mill Creek group, and it was an excellent presentation, and I think everyone really enjoyed the day, especially given the excellent weather that we had. So I'm sure there will be a spring program and another fall program next year, but it was a great time. And then the date for one-stop drop 2016 has been set, and that is April 10th, and again, it will definitely involve paper shredding and electronics drop-off as far as recycling, and there will probably be another element that has yet to be determined, and you will see information on that as we go into the early next year. And then finally, the final meeting for 2015 of the committee will be held this Wednesday in the community room at 7 o'clock, and everyone is welcome to attend. It's usually-- you get a good discussion, and it's a great way for residents to become involved in the village affairs. Our next item on my agenda is that the-- this is the final-- well, no, this is not the final meeting of this council. We do have one special meeting of this council scheduled, and that's scheduled for November 24th. For those that normally attend council meetings, this particular meeting, similar to what we did last year, is a special council meeting scheduled to go through the village manager's appraisal. And I can't say for sure that it will go into executive session, but if we do the same thing as we did last year, there was a motion to move that into executive session. Part of the appraisal or the appraisal then takes place a little bit in executive session, and we come back into regular session. So if people regularly attend, it's probably not one that you will want to attend. But other than that, it will be the last meeting of this particular council, because a new council will be sworn in. The new council that will be sworn in will be the same seven members, since they were all re-elected, but that swearing in will probably be December 1st. The details, I'm meeting with the village manager tomorrow to iron out the details, and those will be sent to council members, and it will be posted for residents. And then the last item I wanted to report on was last year, I gave kind of an annual review of council and talk about the priorities. That was done in December last year. If I am elected, re-elected mayor at the December meeting, I intend to do that this time at the January meeting, because our December meeting this year will be pretty full with items like the budget and some other items, but I will do another similar report back to residents about what we did in 2015 and what our priorities are for 2016. With that, that completes my Mayor's Report. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, we will now move on to new business, and I think the Vice Mayor has a new business item.
Pertaining to recycling, and this time, you can clean out your drawers of all of the mismatched socks, stained t-shirts, ripped towels, sheets that don't fit, twin sheets when you only have queen beds around the house. This is your opportunity. All of those plastic bags that you're saving, because you know you can recycle them somewhere, but you keep forgetting to put them in the car, this is your chance. Next weekend, the City of Cincinnati and St. Vincent de Paul want all of those things. Saturday, November 14th, from 10 to 1, at the Hillcrest Square Save-A-Lot at 1864 Seymour Avenue. And I don't know about-- if our residents are like me, I can hardly close drawers, sheets don't fit in the linen closet anymore, and I don't have anyone who sleeps in a twin bed anymore, so any size sheets, it can be stained, all they ask is that clean. So put those ripped-up towels in the washing machine and get rid of them. Now's your chance. 10 to 1.
Are there any questions related to that? You just-- you have other new business? Are there any questions or comments related to that? If not, other new business?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say a few words, because we lost a resident this past month that many of us admired, some respected, and some people didn't admire. But Albert Lane is a unique person to this village. You know, he moved here in 1975, so he was here for 40 years. He's in Brookwood, where I also live, and typical for Brookwood, he was the only second owner of the house that was built in 1951. People in Brookwood just stay forever, including myself. Albert, we kind of call him the mulch man, because he was a very advocate for people not piling mulch around the base of the tree where it went up on the bark, because I actually looked it up after he criticized my neighbor, and he was correct. You should not pile mulch higher than a few inches, and especially around the base of your tree. And, well, you don't want against the foundation either, you know, above into the brick. But Albert's heart was always in Amberly Village. You know, he came to many, many meetings, and I kind of feel a description of Albert was like a dog. You know, he bites your leg and he won't let go, but he made his point, and he kept making his point, and kept making his point, you know, but in his heart, he was trying to make the village a better place. And I'm sorry that he has passed. After I became on-- got on council, him and his wife, and my wife and I went out to dinner several times. And what a different person around his lovely wife Debbie that he is, or was. So I really enjoyed those dinners, going out with them both. It's brought out a whole different side of him. And often, you know, Albert's ideas actually were correct many times, he just didn't know when to quit on pounding the pavement for his thing there. But I just wanted to mention that he's lost a very talented and good man. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? If not, we can consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you all for attending.